I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under our individual liberty and justice.
Yes.
Again, good morning, everybody. Start with a motion to approve our agenda, but I do have one change. The claims number is incorrect. That's actually $463,357.35 to include the command trailer that came in that we need to have on there.
With that change, I offer a motion to approve the agenda.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you. Shirley, will you call the roll?
Commissioner Ayers. Commissioner Poppins?
Yes.
Commissioner Jibben?
Yes.
Commissioner Schmidt?
Yes.
Commissioner Landin?
Yes. We'll move on to our consent agenda. Can I get a motion to approve the consent agenda?
Move for approval, Madam Chair.
Thank you. Is there a second?
I'll second it.
Thank you. Shirley, will you call the roll, please?
Commissioner Ayers?
Yes.
Commissioner Poppins?
Yes.
Commissioner Jibben?
Yes.
Commissioner Schmidt?
Yes.
Commissioner Landin?
Yes. Now, we're going to move on to our public comment policy. Everybody will be given five minutes, up to a half hour. So if you want to come up, we'll give you the five minutes. Is there anybody here who would like to speak?
Good morning.
Good morning.
My name is Scott Montgomery, 320 Elm Street, Fairview, South Dakota. Got a couple of videos I'd like to show you here.
Scott, where did you say your home was at?
Fairview.
Fairview, okay.
Yep.
Thank you.
Go ahead.
So, this is my black box. And I bought this black box. This black box costs thousands of dollars. Thousands of dollars. I ordered it. I paid for it. But they will not give me the key to open it. I own it. I have valuables in here, but I can't get to it. My friends, that's exactly what's going on with your voting machines. You paid for these. And more than just so-called valuables, you know what's in the black box? Your future. Everything. What you pay for gas, if your borders are secure, what's being taught in your schools, whether you're going to have a lockdown forced with a jab, COVID passports, everything related to your future, that of your children, your grandchildren, is determined by what's in this black box. And yet, you're not allowed to see what's inside of it. This is black box voting. Why do they not want you to see what's inside of it? The fact that they protest so much, doesn't that show you the old saying, "We think thou protestest too much"? Well, there was a book written in 2003 called Black Box Voting by Bev Harris. How many of you have read the book Black Box Voting? Can I see your hands? How many of you have not read the book Black Box Voting? Holy cow. Well, don't feel bad, because I didn't read it either until last week. And when I stumbled on the book, I thought, "Am I the last person to know about this book and read this book"? So I'm glad to know you don't know about it either, because surely, being in the line of work I'm in, I should know about it before you, because this is what I do full-time. But I didn't know about it. You could go to blackboxvoting.org and get the whole book for free.
Mr. Curtis, would you please state your full name for the record?
My name is Clint Eugene Curtis.
And where do you reside?
Tallahassee, Florida.
And what is your profession?
I'm a computer programmer.
Would you please speak into the microphone so the audience can hear your testimony?
I'm a computer programmer.
Mr. Curtis, are there programs that can be used to secretly fix elections?
Yes.
How do you know that to be the case?
Because in October of 2000, I wrote a prototype for President Congressman Tom Feeney at the company I worked for in Oviedo, Florida, that did just that.
And when you say did just that, it would rig an election?
It would flip the vote 51-49 to whoever you wanted it to go to and whichever race you wanted it to win.
And would that program that you designed be something that elections officials, that might be on county boards of elections, could detect?
They'd never see it.
Mr., would you answer that question once again?
They would never see it.
Thanks for your time.
Thank you.
I'm Linda Montgomery, 320 Elm Street, Fairview, South Dakota. Just going to do a short continuation.
And by, oh, 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 I'd say melt them down and recycle and use them for prison bars.
He's much more recycling than him. I'd throw him in the ocean.
But I want to tell you this. So that was in 2018.
2018.
So they came to him, knowing he wrote the first algorithm, and said, "What do we do? What can we do to stop this"? And he says, "You've got to throw them away. You have to do what? Paper and hand-count it".
There is nothing you can do to stop it.
You can't stop it ever. Okay? Now, I want you all to hear this, very important. So the Netherlands came to you and you said, "You can't use them. There's no way to secure them." So what did they do and how long did it take?
It was six months before their election. So obviously, they're stuck with them, right? How can you switch in six months? But if you're in the Netherlands, apparently, you can, because they did. They stopped using them immediately.
They did it. They went completely to paper in less than six months.
Full-hand count.
Six months.
Counted the whole thing by hand.
Because why? Because they had to, or they were going to lose their country forever.
Right. Yep. So they had to get rid of them, and they did.
So they came to the guy, and you know what's... Can you imagine back in the early 2000s, you got a guy that admitted he did... Right now, you're going, "Okay, if we add in here..." And you know what? I'm going to tell you this. The new codes wrote... I'll say it. I probably wasn't supposed to. I don't care. There were guys that there were three different times where I had guys from three different countries that were involved, that were coming over here to sit here on this stage and tell you all they wrote this code. They can't make... For reasons I, you know, there's still stuff going on out there with the investigation. It doesn't matter on who did it. These guys were used for... They were the code writers. They're not the... There was a tool. An evil tool used in these computers. But it would have made it real. But instead, we found the guy that wrote the original code. You can't make this up. And praise the Lord, he's a Democrat, and Biden, so the rotten, crooked media can't say, "Mike brought in another Trump supporter".
Not only am I a Biden supporter, I actually was the Democratic candidate for U.S. Congress down there last year.
Right. Wow.
So I am a Democrat.
As a Democrat.
But I also would like to see elections that are actually real.
Yeah!
Wouldn't that be nice? Wouldn't that be something?
Hi, I'm Gary Schuster, 2812 West Stratton Circle, Sioux Falls. And we'll continue as we've been doing.
How you doing? Glad you're with us. And ESNS is headquartered in Omaha, isn't it?
Unfortunately.
And so I guess your whole state uses ESNS, right?
Again.
So I guess the whole state uses ESNS?
Yes.
All right. Well, explain these.
So I was told that because we're running a little bit behind, that we didn't need to get into the weeds with the slides. So if you want to back it up to the Nebraska image, I'll just do a high-level thing here for...
All right. That'd be great.
So as Brandon has said, we are the home of the largest, super-secret, black-box vote-counting company in the country, if not the world. And why is... Well, there's absolutely no transparency, no verifiability. We can't get any records from any county in the state from our ESNS-controlled elections. So our executive... Who's responsible for this? Our executive branch. And I'm going to name them by name. Ricketts, our governor, Peterson, our attorney general, and Evin, our secretary of state. They hijacked Nebraska's county elections and gave them to ESNS to be counted, to count our votes in secret. Now, what do you think of that?
Yeah. Thank you.
Our election... The elections belong to you, the people, not to the counties, not to the clerks of the counties, not to the SOS. I think here's a point that hasn't been brought up. I don't think... I might be wrong. But in some places, felons are not allowed to vote. Is that correct?
Yes.
But felons, and maybe even not felons, but just simply unscrupulous people, can own election counting companies or vote-counting companies. And there's no law against that. How does that work? ESNS will not disclose their ownership. So we can't even do a background check on these people.
And by the way, this was... This is... You go with the book Black Box Voting, and they... And I'll speak on that tomorrow for 15 minutes. That book was written by Bev Harris in 2003, and she lists all of these people surrounded by... Around the voting machine industry and inside of it that have indictments, gone to jail, price-rigging. I mean, it's just non-stop.
Yep. So if you... If you go read that book, it has some stories. We had a Senator Hagel who was at the top of that of ESNS and ran for office. And guess what? ESNS elected him. It wasn't the people, it was ESNS. I think that happened twice.
Yes, it did happen twice.
Yeah.
And he miraculously won all kinds of places in the state that hadn't been won in years. And I mean, he beat some pretty established candidates, but he was the head of the company that was counting his votes.
Yeah. Something wrong with that.
And a lot of people don't know that.
Yeah.
To this day, a lot of people still don't know that about Chuck Hagel.
In fact, I found, you know, you can go to blackboxvoting.com and you can find the chapters broken down.
Yes.
But you can go to a CIA website and find the whole book in one PDF. It's a great book. Everybody ought to look at it. One more thing I wanted to say about our executive branch, and that is that they did exactly what Obama wanted them to do with the plandemic. Use the COVID plandemic as an excuse to sign off on widespread, unsupervised, no excuse, no chain of custody mail-in-and-drop-box voting, which further corrupted our already corrupt elections. Somebody needs to run these three out on a rail. They're just clowns. And the last thing that I will say, because, oh, 20 seconds, wonderful. Why? Why all this fraud? I'm going to throw a bucket of cold water in your face here. Omaha is not only home to the super-secret black-box vote-counting company, but it's also home to a huge, horrific pedophilia and child-trafficking network. Go to... If you don't believe me, go to frankfranklanscandal.com. You won't be able to listen to much of Franklin Scandal, the book Franklin Scandal. I listened until I couldn't take it anymore, and all I wanted to do was cry. So you've got human trafficking, and we're talking children, and we've got drug trafficking, all of this out of Omaha. And so this is why they need to corrupt our elections. They need to elect weak people and corrupt people who will not investigate this stuff. So...
Thank you.
Yep.
Appreciate it.
You're welcome.
Thank you for your passion as well.
Hi, Mike Mathis, 15063rd Street, Sioux Falls. Thanks for the time. You know, the reason I'm here is these boxes. And I know you all think they're perfect and everything's fine, but we've requested from 66 counties in South Dakota, we've requested these cast vote records for the 2020 election. And all it really is is something that we can do to take a look, to see how accurate our elections are. And we're 0 for 66. We've been either denied or we've been ignored. You know, what that box represents, like he says, is that represents our futures, every one of you, your grandchildren, my children. And I can't just sit on the sideline and not know the true results or, you know, be given what the accurate numbers are. So I'm not accusing anybody of anything, but I just... If we could take a look at the cast vote records and verify, you know, that would put so many of us at peace. And so September 3rd is the deadline for the 2020 cast vote records. And I'm just hoping that you guys are brave enough to stand up and say, "Give these people their records, so they'll go away". And my kids' future and our futures are just too valuable to not fight for this. So I appreciate your time and hope you can be brave. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? All right. If not, we'll move on to Commissioner reports. Any Commissioners have reports they'd like to make?
Madam Chair, I forgot to mention at our previous meeting that I did attend the Lincoln County-Canton Civil War Days on August 13th. And I enjoyed the experience, well-attended, very educational. And I guess I'd like to congratulate Jeff Tanner, who does some of the economic development for us, and also for Lincoln County and Canton, for putting on a nice program.
Great. Thank you. Any other Commissioners have reports?
Can I... Madam Chair.
Go ahead.
The South Dakota Association of Counties has a board of directors, and the board of directors is made up of districts of several counties. We're part of the southeast district. And when a county reaches a certain population, every county has one person they can put on that board. But once you reach a certain population of 65,000-plus, your county is entitled to have two representatives serve on that board. And thus, up until this time, Minnehaha and Pennington County were the only two counties. But I just wanted to point out that Lincoln County has reached that situation, and our Chair will join me on that particular board and will represent the concerns that we have in Lincoln County as far as the struggles we have with budgets and other issues. So I congratulate our Chair for being selected for that board. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner. Commissioner Poppins, any reports you'd like to make?
Keep it quiet. We have a full agenda.
All right. So we're going to move on to item one on our agenda, which is a board discussion and public input regarding the Lincoln County Justice Center. First speaker this morning is going to be Dick Strasberg from Tegger. Good morning, Dick.
Good morning. So as Commissioners, you asked us to look at a variety of options for the courthouse and maybe future jail. So we... I think it's fair to say we've looked at any conceivable options, everything ranging from looking at existing buildings, like a bank building on the corner across the street, church that's north of here, and any conceivable options. The ones that got honed in on were the ground-up facility that would be located west of town here, out on the highway. And then also, we gave consideration to putting it on-site. Can we look at this existing building that we're in right now and potentially replacing the courthouse with a new courthouse? So we've looked at a variety of options. And also, we looked at how many courtrooms are needed. And it's... Looked at what the current need is, what the current use is, future, future needs, looking at the statistics that show the number of felonies, for example, which have roughly doubled in the last 10 or 11 years. And I think they've... When we look at the use and project that out, that comes out where it's a minimum of six courtrooms that are needed. And knowing that there's even one at the end of this month where that there's actually... That the need is... They actually need six now. So this is something that would be, you know, two or three years from now, when this would be completed. But I think the need has been pretty well-established. So we looked at two options for an existing site here, and we wanted to know what is the capacity of this site? And the architects determined that we could do a future capacity of up to 12 courtrooms on this site. And initially, looked at it, maybe building eight courtrooms, space for eight, but actually finish out six of them, so you have shell for two courtrooms. And the future jail would not fit on this site, but it would accommodate all the courts. And also, it would accommodate the needs of... The expanding needs of... The corresponding needs of like state's attorney and things that would... Other uses that would need to expand over the next 10 or 20 years. Then looking at a new site, which has a lot of flexibility, looked at the same thing. Build out eight courthouse for eight, finish out six courtrooms, but build the building large enough for eight. Looked at it for 12. And then also, looked at it in terms of having future room for a jail. So we've spent lots of efforts on... Time on this. Think we'll get the architect, they're going to appear, and they're going to do a presentation that will show a little more detail on it. We've got Henry Carlson that put a lot of time on the numbers on it, and they vetted out the conceptual cost. And then we've got Tom Gruman here as well, to talk about what it all means in terms of a levy.
Thank you.
Lynn Remmers with JLG Architects. And I'll have a file here I'll pull up. So as Dick mentioned, we looked at, excuse me, multiple study... Options over the course of the last couple months. And we've really kind of honed in on two, what we feel very valuable options. As Dick mentioned, one being on a greenfield site, so a completely new build. Looked at master planning that and understood that we could plan for both courthouse and jail on that property. I'll show you the option first. Let's see here if I can zoom out a little bit for you guys. While we do this. So this option says we've got six courtrooms. Two of them are shelled spaces. So basically, we're going to build the infrastructure, the roof, the walls, the floors, but we won't fit those spaces out. So there's that option of, I guess, doing so, it's a way of controlling costs and a way of providing space that you can grow into in the very near future, which it looks like, again, projections appear. That's going to be a need within the next, maybe less than 10 years. So this option, again, we do include the new sheriff admin into this space. We have future expansion of another 12 courtrooms. Also can grow the state's attorney space and any other office space into that future addition. And the 3D diagram here down below kind of shows you that stacking and relationship of how the building could be arranged. This is very preliminary planning, so it's not a full design by any means. And one of the things I want to point out is, you know, by having this new building, it's really an opportunity for you to use 21st century courthouse design and meet those security and circulation needs that your current facility is not meeting and is unable to meet without some major renovations and/or additions. So what that means is basically, your judge's circulation becomes secure and private. Public circulation is separate from that. And then also, any circulation from between sheriff's office, holding, and to criminal courts is also separate. So there's no interaction of public or defendants or that type of cross-circulation. Moving to site plan here, this just shows kind of a general layout of what that site plan could look like. We are thinking roughly in the neighborhood of nine and a half acres for the courthouse and sheriff. And then, once the jail is expanded, or if you choose to expand into a future jail, we believe around 11 and a half acres will be sufficient for this type of layout. Option two. This option, again, is looking at your current site, current facility. We were tasked with looking at how many courtrooms we can get on the site, for one, but also what it would look like if the existing courthouse was demolished and the new addition went up in its place. So this is what this option shows. There's very minimal remodel space in your current administration building, but there would be some of that happening for state's attorney. Their department is growing pretty quickly, so that would happen probably within this first phase to give them a little bit more office space. So the footprint of the new addition roughly stays very close to the same as a previous option, again, keeping with the 21st century courthouse design, keeping secure circulation and meeting those needs. There would be, we feel, a little bit of an opportunity to expand the current lobby, so keeping that same entrance point, but expanding that as you're getting more visitors and, you know, larger groups of people coming through for those busier court days. So we do have that kind of planned here as an option. And then, one of the, I guess, unique pieces with this one is the new addition would encompass part of what is now your secure judges parking. So the thought and idea was we'd bring some of that parking indoors on a lower level. That would be kind of the Sally Port and sheriff parking. We'd also try to incorporate some of that secure judges parking into that. So a couple of the, you know, things we really like about this option, it maintains this site as the city center, which I think is important for city master planning and city development, keeping that core is a good thing. The, you know, downside is there is a lack of onsite parking. A lot of it's, you know, street parking right now, so... And then, again, in this option, we do have that plan for six of the courtrooms would be built out right away, and then two of them shelled for future growth and future space. This is just to look at the site plan overall, give you a little bit more context. You can see the dash lines of the existing courthouse below, so you kind of get an idea of that scale. But we can, you know, just by looking at that sheer footprint size, you know, it works pretty well on this site and still gives kind of an ample green space around the building. I'll let Mike go through a little bit of how they got to some of the cost implications, and then if there are any other questions, we can get into those.
Good morning, Commissioners. Mike Raul. Mike Raulson, Henry Carlson Construction. Excuse me. We were brought on, obviously, to look at order magnitude cost for potential facilities. Understanding that we're not to the point of counting the number of doors or the size of the windows, we had to look at more broad brush strokes in the sense of square footages. We did break that down, differentiating between jailhouse, courthouse, sheriff's office. So it's not just one broad brush stroke of the building's x per square foot. In order to develop that square foot cost, we looked at 40 courthouse, recent, 40 recent courthouses, normalized that for Canton, and then escalated that to 2023. So understanding that we're probably going to be done this next year, if this project goes forward, we wanted to try and forecast the best we could. We applied that same logic to the jails that we've worked on, as well as the sheriff's offices that we've recently worked on. So we feel pretty confident, for a broad brush stroke, that these are relatively accurate square foot costs, based on the information we know to date, with the program that JLG has provided. So with that said, as you can see before you, there's kind of a summary of two different options. Option one, again, it's on a greenfield site, there's an eight courtroom option and 12 courtroom option. And I'll just speak to the construction cost, I'll let Dick speak to soft costs and development costs. But if we're just looking at the construction costs of an eight courtroom option, we're approximately $49,900, excuse me. To go to 12 courtroom option, construction cost only, is approximately $67,500,000. Sheriff's office is now, looking at this, understanding again, that we are on a greenfield site, these are kind of add-ons. So to add the sheriff's office is approximately $11 million, and add the jails, another $36,900,000. Now, kind of jumping back to the existing facility, obviously, this is in addition to your property here. As Lynn stated, the courthouse works well here. A sheriff's office and jail would need to be built on the greenfield site. So this is kind of a hybrid. So when we're looking at this, understand that both eight and the 12 courtroom options are built here, however, the sheriff's office and jail would be built on a greenfield site. So again, with that said, construction cost of an eight courtroom option is approximately 12 courtroom option is $53,913,000. And then, the off-site sheriff's office and jail is $54,520,000. And again, I just want to reiterate, these are broad brush strokes. We're not, again, to the point of counting doors and picking out the carpet. This is order magnitude costing based on what we know today. Any questions for me? I'll let Dick speak to the soft cost.
So first, just a quick definition on what soft costs are. We consider soft costs to be professional fees, I mean, the architect's fee, our fee, legal fees, and so on. They also include furniture, fixtures, and equipment. The industry called FFNE, so includes that, and that's everything, if you tip the building upside down and whatever falls out, would be considered FFNE. So it's all the chairs, desks, and so on, and as well as all the electronic equipment needed by the courts. So within the soft costs, we're using 16.6% for that, which is that basket of things I just mentioned. It would also include things like soil testing, surveys, quality control inspections, and so on, out on site. Okay, one of the big differences we've got on, you know, obviously, a greenfield site compared to using the existing site, is the land purchase and utilities. The city recently did a study to look at what it would take to bring sanitary sewer out to that site, and had some pretty big numbers on it. There's, it's, would be roughly $5 million city, roughly $5 million county, or sort of to be determined how that would be all broken out, but $10 to $11 million for to complete the sewer line out there. It has water already out there, so that would be one of the big considerations there. So if we include all that on the eight courtroom option, it comes out to over $69 million. And if it were to go to 12 courtroom, 12 courtrooms, $92 million. And then, with the addition of the, it'd be added, the sheriff on top of that is on either one of those options, would be 14.2. And if we were to do a jail, using today's dollars, it'd be $47 million for a 120-bed jail. So that gives you an idea on the, what it would be to build out on a greenfield site. And if we look at the existing, addition to the existing, it, numbers are lower for one reason, the sheriff's office would maintain where it is and would expand, the expansion need would be met by the addition. And then, there obviously is, it's a land purchase on it. One thing we should note on the options for anything on the existing courthouse is, what we're showing today, and the architects showed in their block diagrams, it isn't architecture, it's just sort of schematic blocks of space. And obviously, the architecture on that would, being an architect myself, I would say that it would definitely need to reflect the, sort of the grandness of what you've got right now. And taking an older courthouse like you have right now, clearly, it's the center of town, it's a monument, an iconic structure, although over the years, it's been, you know, the architecture, other than the shape, has sort of been stripped down, covered with, the stones covered with stucco, interior finishes have largely been replaced, and it's in the state of disrepair, to say the least. There's a study on it that was done a few years ago that shows really the, just the quality and the, of the, just the deterioration of it, of a 130-year-old building. So it's got lots of age on it. We did look at, can we reuse existing? That's always the question. And I think in terms of, as architects, it's the first thing we want to look at, can we use what's there? And in this case, it's not just cost of replacing it, but it's the configuration of it. In today's world, the security on courthouses has completely changed. It's no longer acceptable to have, you know, victims and the offender ride up the same elevator, same with judges, same with the public. So the, just best practices in the industry calls for separating those functions. And that was, that's a big issue. That's how these new courthouses are designed, and it makes the existing courthouse obsolete for meeting those standards. So if we look at the numbers there, then it's $16 million less to do an expansion on the existing courthouse compared to building new, $53 million, $53.5 million roughly. If you go up to 12 courtrooms, it'd be $69 million. And then, it would be a future standalone jail, which, if we did 120-bed, estimated is $75 million. So there's kind of the big picture on it. The two options that we're kind of honed in on, I think, from just a kind of a big picture overview of what might be, at least a consideration here, is looking at the $69.5 million for an eight courtroom facility on a new site versus the $53.5 million for adding on to this property. And I want to emphasize that these numbers are schematic in nature. The design and square footages, it still needs to be refined, but I think from a sort of a big picture decision-making, they're good numbers to use for that purpose. So Tom, if you want to come up and talk about what it would be, how that might impact the tax levy?
Hi. So Tom Grumman from Collier Securities. And as you can see, I've spent a lot of time on this with the levies. The one thing I always like to point out, they're there, they're dollar per thousand, and that's taxable value. I can't say that enough. It's not what you sold your land for, or what you think your land is worth, that you're going to pay taxes on, it's the taxable value of that land, what you're being taxed on. So when you're doing your calculations and you're talking about it down at the coffee shop, be honest and make sure you're talking taxable value and not full and true, or what you think the value of the land is, because that can skew it, obviously. So that's important. You know, I'll field some questions. We looked at a 2% growth here, why did we do that? So with a growing county like we have here, in the 10-year period, which you can see on there with the eight courtrooms, that's projected to go 10 years before you might need some additional expansion, looked at it, like some kind of growth factor in there. And the reason why you do some growth there is that, then, when folks that are moving here, then will pay, help pay for that project. This is not, your taxes go up 2%, it's assuming 2% of what they call real growth, meaning growth above inflation, because somebody's building a house next door to you, or there's a new business being built in the county. That's real growth, and that actually keeps your taxes lower. If we didn't have growth, your taxes would go down. And the example I use is, if you're paying 25 bucks a month, and somebody builds a house next to you, yes, that'll help lower the tax, and maybe you'd only pay $22 next year, and they would pay $22. The way this is set up is, you would stay at the amount of money you're paying right now, again, I'm just throwing this out there, 25 bucks a month, and they would pay their 25 bucks a month, and going forward, that's the way it would work for that first 10 years. There's no exact science here to this growth, and it doesn't work out exactly like I just mentioned, but it's a way to capture how the county's growing and to take advantage of that growth. And then, the folks that are coming into the county, you know, to pay their fair share, or pay their share of the project that they're going to be using the time that they're going to be here. So that's the reason for the growth factor. And we see this a lot in counties, mainly, we see it in school districts, growing school districts, we'll use a growth factor to, you know, spread that tax out to the folks that might be moving here in five to 10 years. This is a 30-year financing, these numbers are based on 30-year financing also. I think that's it.
So the team is here to answer any questions you have, clarify anything that was thrown out there. Obviously, a lot of information to process, a lot of detail behind these, any one of these numbers.
Sure, thank you. I have a couple of questions, Dick. In the existing annex building option, does, do those projected costs include demolition of the old part of the courthouse?
Yes, it does.
That does?
Yes.
And then, is there anything in here to figure out about what our parking needs would be with that many courtrooms? And then my next, and then also, for a public defender's offices, if the county decides to go that route and have our own public defender office?
I think at this point, we looked at parking, of saying that's something we need to solve. There is, you know, a lot of onsite parking that's downtown, and I think that's something to have to, to be determined. And Lynn, maybe you could address the public defender question?
Yeah, so public defender, we do have space allocated in the new addition portion of that option.
How much?
I want to say it was roughly around 5,000 to 7,000 square feet.
5,000 to 7?
Yep.
Okay.
So have a couple offices and, you know, some conference space, that sort of thing for those touchdown times they're here.
So with what you have built in, I mean, this space is maxed out at 12 courtrooms, and then, would it allow for any growth in those other areas, like the public defender's office?
Yeah, we would, we could plan in for some growth there. I think with the, and you're talking option two, correct?
Right now, I am, yes.
Okay. So one of the big departments that's going to grow in the future is state's attorney. So that, in that option, we would plan to have them take over completely that current floor they're in, which gets them to roughly, I think, a total of around 19,000 square feet. So they're about a quarter of that right now, less than that a little bit. So that's one of the major departments that will grow. In the new addition, we do have some space allocated for future growth for other departments, whether that be state's attorney, or clerk of courts, or other court services.
So, and I, somebody can correct me if I'm wrong, maybe, I don't know, Bill. So when I look at Minnehaha County, I think there's actually more public defenders than there are prosecutors. So if our state's attorney's office is projected to be at 19,000 square feet, where is that space going to be for the public defender's office if we would do that in the existing building? Is there going to be room for something like that?
For public defender, we would do that in the new addition.
Right. Where would that 19,000 feet, square feet come from?
In the existing, sorry.
Do you have it figured out in the annex plan?
Yes, yes, we do. Let me see if I can scroll up to that option quick.
Because 7,000 feet's not going to cut it.
Yep. So right here, the state's attorney is on this current floor. Their current space is the kind of upper left-hand corner of the floor plan. The option that we're seeing, we would grow them into what is your courtroom right now, and then, in the future, take over these other two areas. And then, for the 20-year growth master plan, we would end up taking this entire floor for state's attorney. And then, on the lower level of the addition, we have kind of this space allocated here for future growth, whether it be the office or additional courtroom space. It's kind of open multipurpose right now.
So where would the, if the state's attorney's office needs that much space, and maybe I'm not asking my question clearly, where is that amount of space for a public defender's office?
So part of the process here is going through and fully designing these layouts. So right now, our program has that information in there. And then, the kind of the next step is, once we get into further planning and further schematic design, we would start placing those a little bit more accurately within the plan. But right now, it would probably be with, within either the level one or level two of the build.
Thank you.
Madam Chair?
Go ahead.
I'm going back to the greenfield site and using the eight courtroom version. Now, that's a nine and a half acre footprint, correct?
Correct.
And if we, future. Question is, if we bought nine and a half acres, I mean, if we, if you put sewer and water out there, that's going to be development. I mean, I don't think that that land is going to sit idly by, I'm sure it's going to be opened up for commercial, residential, whatever. So if we factored in only nine and a half acres and we're out there, we're anticipating that we're going to grow. So how much more land should we acquire, regardless of what option on that greenfield site we make?
Yep.
Because we've talked about how many acres you need, and I've had numbers up to 30 acres. Isn't that right, Dick? I mean?
I guess, our recommendation is that when we get into this next step, we really take a harder look at how many acres we need. And given that this is agriculture right now, and going forward with it, we'd recommend that you, that we're going to round up on the amount of property we take for future, given the growth of the county, I think it would be wise to give serious consideration to that. So if you were to, you know, move forward with this, I think that'd be one of the next things we'd look real heavily at.
But these numbers that are quoted here, are, they're only for nine and a half acres acquisition, correct?
Actually, what it would be is zero for the actual property and then paying for the utilities.
Okay. So we would have land in addition to the, well, we got one, $69,575,000. So we'd have land on top of that? Or is the land factored in?
You could say the land's factored in. I think there's a negotiation that would need to take place on giving what we'd actually pay for the land.
Okay, thank you.
And just to follow up on that, so the future court expansion in the courthouse, that would be allocated as part of that nine and a half. Once you add on a future jail, that's where the land increase would come from. So I think there's that kind of conversation, do you, you know, get that full amount now, or do you?
And you'd have the parking as well, yeah.
Yep, and we've tried to account for any of that future parking, so.
Other questions, commissioners?
Have we pretty much ruled out option three at this particular stage?
We did. First, option three was to look at, could we buy the bank building, or lease the bank building, and what would fit in there? And initially, that seemed like a pretty good idea until we got into the actual square footages and looked at what would actually fit. The only department that you have right now that would fit on one floor is your WIC function. And even, you know, taking any of the other departments, it'd be on mall it'd be on multiple floors. It, it's a very small building. And it doesn't, just, just in terms of fitting what your needs are today, it, it doesn't fit the needs you have today, even if we were to shrink them down and go to real, for example, you know, smaller office standards, and, and try and shrink everything down. It just plain doesn't fit. And then coming back here, we, you know, the idea was potentially, you know, take several functions out of this building, and turn them into courtrooms. And with that thought, you know, as far, as far as following best practices for security, it's, it, it just, it doesn't work. And as, you know, as an innovative idea to, you know, consider it because it's existing property. You know, could we use that? And it's, it's across the street. So, but after, when we looked at it closer, and really got into the program and looked at the square footages, it's, it's just plain too small. We also looked at the, the church property that's to the north, to see if, you know, would that possibly work? And then we studied those real hard, knowing that, you know, with initial thought that it could be a, you know, an option. But as we got into the growth projections, and even, even just meeting what it does today. It doesn't meet the needs today, and definitely not for the future.
For those here today, and taxpayers and so forth that might be watching, I, I, have, did we ever consider, you know, building our vacant lots across the street, close to that bank building as well? I know we have a vacant lot, and the old jail, and that type of thing. Did, in, maybe that's something that people would, would like to hear as well.
Yeah, I think it's, I think it's fair to say that any property in town could be considered. It's going to have its challenges with existing, you know, finding a parcel big enough in town that would fit this size of a building, is what we've run into. There's currently not, it's not available right now. And we've looked at it, you know, if we were to. I think any time you look at, at this, you know, is there another, you know, city block that could be used? And I think that's still, you know, a possibility. Right now, there isn't anything that's apparent. Most, most are multiple owners, existing businesses, and so on.
Because even if you left these two buildings the same, and you could make something work across the street, with building and with the bank, there would be considerable savings, wouldn't there?
We don't think so.
Okay.
Because now you're buying, now you're spending a lot of dollars on the property. And, and just from a, just even from just an aerial view of looking at it, it, it's just not big enough, without taking out a lot of existing building, businesses.
Thank you.
Madam Chair.
Go ahead, Commissioner.
Thanks, everyone, that's for giving a presentation today. It seems deja vu for me. 20 years ago, approximately, we were having similar conversations in a much smaller room, talking about how to add space for treasurer, auditor, et cetera, that, that we now sit in today. There was conversation about finding a new space at that time, and, and the decision was made to be committed to here. I didn't support it at that time, but I did support the fact that we were, had made that commitment, and we got this built. And I'm very proud of what was built. Now we're having the same, this conversation again. What is our future? Where should we be? What is the cost versus benefit? A new site, I think, given, the reality is, I don't believe that we have any choice but to have a public safety center, which includes a jail. Is it going to be in this action today? I don't, or, in this next coming weeks, I don't know. But I do believe that is our future. There will be an off-site location for a minimum of jail. It's a lot of dollars now, today. You know, we looked at something that was much less a few years ago, but the times have changed, and this is the reality, and this is what we have to face, and what, hope to hear, what the public has to say about it. But we have a tough decision, and, and it just seems like deja vu again. So, thank you.
Commissioner Poppins, I agree to some extent. But at the same time, I think it's important that we wait for the state to hear what the possible jail study, or regional jail studies and so forth might come about, too. Because hopefully, that information will be coming soon in regard to that matter.
I don't disagree that the desire would be to wait. Unfortunately, time is not on our side. We are facing a crunch in our courtrooms, and we have a contract that sits out there with housing our current prisoners, that there is no guarantee after our current contract. And every indication has indicated that they will be full, and hence, there would not be space for us. So it is too late, once they give us that contract, if we don't have a facility to build, or to move into. Thank you.
I'd also like to add, Madam Chair, I think no matter what we do, I'm assuming it might be a little bit difficult in the agricultural sector this year to accept any option that we choose. Yesterday, I had the opportunity to participate in the 30th Annual Pro Farmers Crop Tour. And that took place in southern Minnehaha, Lincoln, Turner, Hutchinson, Yankton Counties. And we ended up in Cedar County, Nebraska, Pierce County, Nebraska. And I toured with the head scout of the Western Corn Belt, along with two, I guess USDA people, one from Washington DC. And I think, more than anything, the one that had been on the tour for eight years was pretty well shocked by what we got here in South Dakota. There's going to be a lot of farmers very disappointed when they start their combines and go out there. We just don't have the bushels. It's just not there. It's sad. And you drive by, and it doesn't look so bad. But there was, we're not even anywhere close to a national yield average in corn or soybeans. And we won't. I, the law of timing is everything. I understand, we put this off for a while. But I'm assuming it's going to be difficult to get that support. And if, you know, I gotta go back to my six municipalities, and to the farmers there, and talk to them about it. It's, it's going to be a tough sell right now. You know, we had people from the Wall Street Journal on this tour, international buyers. We had, had people all over. And, you know, this is some of the toughest conditions we've had since a long time, 2019, even though we didn't get much planted. What was planted was good. But, you know, I, I, I just want to remind people of that as well.
Again, I concur that times are always tough for some sector. I will remind, though, that it, the initial proposal that was done a couple of years ago, the levy that would have been projected onto taxpayers would have been around 34 cents per thousand. With the numbers that I'm looking at today, we're looking at 90 cents per thousand, and still not being probably equivalent. So, and again, that's rough numbers at this point. It's not getting better. It's only getting worse in all sectors. And it's, it's just our decision, and the taxpayer's decision is, you know, what do we have to do? I believe there's some things that we have to do, and we can't delay, unfortunately. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner. Any other commissioners have questions?
I got a comment.
Go ahead.
I don't think there's anybody sitting up here that doesn't recognize the fact that we are in need to do something. I mean, we have to do something. The court's going to tell us to do something. I mean, you don't have a choice. And then again, we got to confront reality with what our ability is to build, or react to that. We know our most immediate need right now is courtroom space. That is what we're lacking. And we suddenly jumped from four courtrooms to six courtrooms because we have a great deal of, obviously, looking at the crime rate that's going around continually increasing, hadn't gotten any less. So in a perfect world, we'd like to build courtrooms. We'd like to build a jail. We'd like to build all of that. But then we got to confront reality, because it's you, the taxpayers, that are going to have to pay for that. So I sit there and wrestle with the idea of, in, in where people live in Sioux Falls. And I understand, Jim, where you're at. I go buy my cornfield every day, and I hope that it yields as good as it looks. But now that you've told me that, maybe I bear something down. But here's what, here's what happens to people. They've lived in, they've lived in a neighborhood, and they bought a house for about $188,000. And they've lived there for probably 15, 20, 25 years. Now, they've had their house paid for. Their taxes are rather affordable. So suddenly, the, the neighbor moves out, and suddenly, the house next door is worth $320,000. Well, hang on to me. That is what we have to use when our assessors go out, because we have to use the market. So now, we have to use the $320,000. We didn't have a choice. That's not our choice. That's the market. That's what's going on in reality. So now their taxes get rashed up. Not a lot by counties. Counties portion in Sioux Falls is about 13 to 15 cents. But the school district's got to be paid for. The city's got to be paid for. All of those taxes continue to go up. So they're appetite. To pay for something like a jail or courtrooms, in their mind, ah, not, not that important. So what we have to face here, to me, is what can we do for the least amount of impact on the taxpayer, and yet meet our most immediate needs? That, to me, has got to be the thread of the needle. And I don't, you know, when you look here, none of this, really, when you look at numbers, are too appetizing. Because if you go on the 32 cents, you got about 80 bucks a year. If you go on the 40 cents, you got about $102. Not bad, not bad. I mean, it's not going to put people out on the street. But yet, people say that's a tax increase. So I think it's incumbent upon us, whatever we decide on, and whatever our, our professionals sitting in front of us come up with, we got to try to explain that to people, that it's, in our judgment, the best interest for the future. And should we build for the future? Of course we should. Lincoln County, you guys, is going to be 100,000 people in about 2030. That's a far cry from what we are today, even. So that's my comment.
Madam Chair, final comment.
Uh, go ahead, Commissioner.
The one information that we don't have in front of us that will be coming is, if we were to build a public safety center with a jail, we currently budget for around 200, or 2.5 million dollars. Those funds would be released then to operate our own facility. So I think we have some information that is needed yet. Again, we had it before. We'll need to revamp it for today's market. But that may make a huge impact based on what those numbers tell us. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, I'm going to open it up for the public input session. You'll, anybody that wants to come up, you'll be given five minutes to speak, ask questions. Just going to ask that we be courteous, use microphones. I don't know if we have an extra microphone. Is there one that we can pass around? Do we have one we can pass around? Okay, great. All right, thanks. Yeah, we need to set it up here. So is there anyone from the public that would like to come up, ask questions, give us their input on this proposed facility?
Scott Montgomery, Fairview. Um, how many courtroom do we have now?
We have, Bill, correct me if I'm wrong, we have, we're using two B.
We have two B, we have two A, and we have courtroom three A tops.
Okay.
Two full courtrooms and a motion security.
Okay, thank you.
Are they being utilized every day?
My understanding is that they are scheduled every day. You have to schedule them, and then it's always happens where cases fold and get settled beforehand. But it might happen on the courthouse steps. It doesn't mean that you didn't have to have that space scheduled.
Well, I can tell you, my experience with my taxes, they've been going up 15% a year for I don't know how many years, way beyond what inflation is. And I just, we had a gentleman here that said, the bigger the county gets, our taxes go down. Mine haven't gone down, not one cent, ever. This last year, they doubled. They went up 98.5%. Doubled. And you know, Jim, you say that $100 isn't going to put anybody in bankruptcy. Talk to people on a fixed income. Talk to the people who are living on social security. I'm on a fixed income now. I mean, $100 here, $100 there, $100 here. I mean, it just, it adds up. I don't have another source of income. So to think that this $100 tax increase for the guy on the street isn't going to make any difference, I think is ridiculous. Not everybody's working in this county. I mean, I wish I was a little more prepared for this. I didn't look at the agenda, but we got issues in this county. I mean, if, if it's true that the larger this county gets, the tax burden gets shared, why aren't my taxes going down? I mean, what, what, where is all the county's money going? Because they're building houses. What does that cost the county? Somebody explain that to me. The county is growing by leaps and bounds. How is that costing the county any money? We should have more income now than we've ever had. Where is it all going? I mean, the roads are there. The ditches are there for the drainage. What's it cost this county for the north end of the county to be increasing in population? I, I don't get it. Somebody needs to explain that to me. Because I agree with this guy. When, when there's more people coming in, we got all this building gone, my taxes ought to go down. It's not happening. And now we want us, whatever mentions of $120 million. How's that going to get paid for? I mean, do we need more courtrooms? Probably. Do we need some extravagant building? I don't think so. What's wrong with a tin shed? What's wrong with the, the building out here we built for the county building? Courts can be held in something like that. So I, I don't know. I'm a little concerned about, when I started hearing this millions and millions and millions of dollars like it's nothing. It is. And we all think that the county's going to keep growing. Has anybody looked at what happens to the economy right now? What the future of the economy looks right now? Maybe, maybe it's not going to keep growing. Maybe it's going to stop, maybe it's going to go the other way. I know people that are moving out of Lincoln County because they can't afford to pay the taxes. Lincoln County has the highest taxes in the state. Not the highest in the country, but get on the, get on the map and look at what the taxes are in Lincoln County versus the rest of the country. It's shocking. And what are we getting for it? I'm not sure. It just, it just kind of baffles me that, I, like I say, I agree with this gentleman. The more people come here, their taxes ought to be going down because there's more people to share that burden. But it's not. Like I say, it might have gone up repeatedly, year after year after year after year after year, way beyond inflation. And then when they doubled this last year, I, I know, I've talked to people, their taxes went up 350%. I, I don't know. It just seems like it's, we're out of control. And I don't know, I don't know how to get it back under control. There shouldn't be just unlimited spending. And do we need this stuff? Maybe, but maybe not such extravagant things. I mean, let's live within our budget. Let's tighten our belts up a little bit. Let's quit spending. You know, everybody that comes along and asks for a dollar, we hand out to them. I know there was a deal we wanted to give Sioux Falls, I don't remember what it was, 21, $24,000. And it's like, why? Why would we give Sioux Falls a penny? I, I, this has been a year or so ago. I saw it on one of your films, that there was an argument about they wanted to give some organization, Sioux Falls, $24,000. They aren't even in our county. Why would we give them a cent? And I don't, I don't get it. But everybody in this county is under the burden of taxes. And we need, I think it's everybody's responsibility to try to reduce that. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Just a couple of comments. Actually, Lincoln County is the 55th percentile state for property taxes. The county is, there's only 11 counties that have lower tax levy than Lincoln County does. That's current. If you don't understand where your money is going, I know our auditor is very happy to sit down and explain your tax card with you. By and large, a lot of the municipalities and people that live in the county, a lot of their money is going to schools. You might look at your tax card, and you might see that two-thirds of your tax dollar is going to schools. So the county actually gets probably the smallest share of your tax dollar to provide for public safety, law enforcement, roads. So, and when you say your taxes are doubling or tripling, Um, so, and when you say your taxes are doubling or tripling, you might want to really look at that because it may be your valuation that is changing, but I have a hard time believing that your taxes have been doubling. And if they are, it's not because of what we up here sitting as commissioners are doing. So I, I would ask you to sit down with the auditor and look at your property tax card and actually see where those funds are going. We'll go ahead with the next speaker.
Can I just ask, but if my evaluation?
Yeah, go ahead.
If my evaluation doubles, doesn't my taxes double?
No.
That's what it's based on?
That is not true.
Okay, I'll take a look at that.
Thank you. Anybody else want to come up?
Mark Nordsee, 7900 South Pinewood, Sioux Falls. I want to thank you and the committee that's been working on this, uh, to get this done and a process that they're going through. It's been a very deliberate and probably painful process for many of them to figure out what our new direction's going to be. I, I also want to thank you for allowing them the consultant to help them. I mean, we're very smart people, but having a consultant is very helpful, uh, in determining the future needs of Lincoln County. First, I really do support the work of the committee and the need for the Justice Center in Lincoln County. We're, we're growing. This is not something we can ignore for a whole lot longer. I do ask that we let the process work its way through and that we value the recommendations and the work that has been done. I encourage you not to allow destructive ideas to short circuit the deliberate process that's been underway. There's lots of people on the fray who come and talk to you personally and could continue to throw ideas into the mix. Some of them are good, some of them are just distractions. So please stay focused on the need that we have here. Second, I realize, as we all do, that this is going to cost money. Nobody likes to spend money. Nobody likes their taxes going up. Uh, currently, if we move forward with this, uh, building, um, it means bonded debt or a lease. A lease is the most expensive option. That was talked about earlier in the process. Bonded debt is repaid currently by property taxes. Um, as started last year, uh, in the legislature, I urge the county to work with our legislators to look at the, the sales tax option. A sales tax option does a couple of things for us. Uh, first, it broadens the base where we can collect the dollars from. Um, and secondly, um, it's, it's dedicated to the repayment of the debt. So as those property ta, or those sales taxes are collected, we can pay off the debt as rapidly as possible. And I think that also serves to lower the overall cost of this. My comment with that is, let's let the folks north of 57th start paying for our Justice Center. We all know the criminals all don't come from Lincoln County. So let's, uh, let's ask those folks to pay their fair share in this process. Third, a reminder that the money we currently spend with Minnehaha County does not go away and is not really a savings. The money, if we build a Justice Center, those dollars are simply going to be shifted into our own costs. Uh, we're going to be hiring people. We're going to be having, you know, buildings to maintain. So is there a savings there? Probably a little bit, but not a huge savings. So it's not like, oh, boy, we're going to save all this money from, that we're paying, currently paying Minnehaha County. And finally, let's, let's make sure the Justice Center meets both our current and our future needs, not, but not the wants. This is a needs-based discussion, not a wants-based discussion. And the same goes for how technology or law changes might apply to this. Do we need physical courtrooms the size that they currently are? Or is technology going to do that? Do we need, um, 19,000 square feet for public defenders if maybe they're going to work from home or if they're going to have virtual offices or whatever else? Do we need physical office space for that? The traditional way we've done business may not be the way that we do business in the So I ask you to think about those things as you make this great decision and think about the future of Lincoln County. But thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else want to come up?
Madam Chair?
Yeah, go ahead.
And while people are thinking, Mark, I just wanted to emphasize something. You mentioned sales tax. Well, we had Senator Ernie Otten that had a program, very briefly, that would have given ability for counties to levy up to a half-cent sales tax, which was not for general fund purposes. It was for what we needed building, uh, for our building situation. And the other part that was nice is it had to be referred to the people. So all, everybody in Lincoln County would have voted on it and had to carry by 60%. That's a realistic area because counties cannot survive on, on property taxes alone. That's across the state. That's a given. And sometime, the state legislature is going to have to wrestle with this. It's not an easy one, but they're going to have to find some alternative sources to assist us in, in these huge expenditures that you have for capital needs. So, thank you, though. Thank you for your comments.
Thank you, Commissioner. Any other commissioners have questions, comments?
I was waiting to see if there's any other public comment.
Yeah, any other public comment?
I would encourage you to speak. I'd like to hear from you.
I would too. Anyone from our citizens group?
Yeah, I'd like to hear from you. I'd like to hear your attitudes. What's, what's your feel?
Deb Thompson, 478-56270th Street. I just have a question. A couple of years ago, when the jail came up for a vote and the county had already purchased land by T, has that land been sold?
No.
If you sold that land, wouldn't it help pay for the new jail?
Um, a portion of that land is on the market for sale. Anybody else?
Hi, Ned Horstedt, 27058 Southeastern Avenue, Sioux Falls. Just a question, if it's easily answered, you know, looking at the cost and, and, you know, reason for a jail being population growth and crime tied to that, is there a breakdown between how many people are sitting in jail because of a violation of county ordinance versus state law?
I, I don't have the answer to that, as I sit here. That's a question for somebody that I think's not here.
The, well, I was going to say, there are very few people, there's nobody in for ordinance. Almost all of them are for either repeat offenses or violent crimes.
Cool, thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else? If not, we're going to move on to our, the next item on our agenda.
Oh, I do have.
Oh, go ahead.
Um, again, I want to thank those that did speak today. I hope they're, if the public's listening or looks into our meeting afterwards, uh, they reach out to us. This is something that, this isn't a wants list. This is a needs list that we're doing. Uh, it was exactly what we did, uh, for the last five-plus years that when we've been looking into this. Um, but we, our timeline, that end game is here. There is no delay option at all. So we, what we present to the public has to be the appropriate answer because, uh, any delay in this would, would be detrimental to the taxpayers because the alternative option of, of us as commissioners and taxpayers not agreeing to build something is absolutely not acceptable. Because the court system has to have space. The judiciary, or the jail scenario is, is fast approaching. There may be a, a year or two on that, but that would be about it. And that's how long it would take to build something. So we have to be expedient. We have to be, uh, frugal, but yet we have to come up with a plan that is viable for not just the immediate future, but at least a little bit of our, uh, growth because, um, people still want to come here. It's a beautiful county and we need to make sure that we are, uh, making sure that we have the infrastructure in place to handle that growth. Thank you.
Thank you. Um, just a note too, there's a great tool on the property tax issue. Um, there's a Department of Revenue portal that's very user-friendly. Um, you can find it on the Department of Revenue website.
We do have a link to it on our website also.
We do. Okay. Um, but anyway, it's a great tool. You can actually go in and, uh, look at how your property taxes are determined and, um, see where your tax dollars are going. So I used the tool and I, I thought it was very easy to use.
Madam Chair, I.
Encourage you to do that.
I would share with the public, based on what I've seen so far, uh, the most likely the option will be, uh, adding on to the existing facility for the sheer fact of the cost that it would be to build a new site. I do believe that a new site is the best option in the long term, but I am sympathetic to and understanding the costs and the burden to the taxpayers. And Commissioner Schmidt, uh, says it more eloquently as to what the public can muster in their budget. And we have to work within that as well, and this is probably what is going to be the most, uh, palatable to the public. So thank you.
Thank you.
Commissioner Landin, are we setting up public hearing, or public meetings or anything regarding this in the future or to get out more information?
Well, I think we should. Um, should we figure out, you want to figure out dates now or do you want to talk off the record to find some dates and then put them on the next agenda?
Yeah, why don't I pull some information together for the next meeting and then we'll have some dates, options and things like that.
Okay. I just want to make sure everybody that needs to be there can be there.
Yep.
One of the suggestions I would make is, if we really want to do this, we should be in every community. I think that was what we talked about. You talk about being in the communities of T, Harrisburg, Lenox, Worthing, you hit them all. Because I think, uh, everybody's going to have to pay for this, so they all ought to know about it. And it's, uh, it's our obligation to present as much information as we can to the largest number of people we can.
Right. We did that before and then COVID hit, so we didn't get through all of those meetings. Um, but I would say probably in the evening. Yeah.
Well, do you want to do it during, um, like presentations during city meetings?
You could.
We sure could.
Yeah.
Um, that way the cities could get the information and hand it out. I can touch base with the cities and see which time would work for them for their city meetings.
Okay. No, that sounds good.
Can we have an objective of when to have all of these meetings, uh, accomplished?
Absolutely. When do you want to have them accomplished?
Within a month, if at all possible.
Um, most cities, the smaller cities aren't going to meet but twice a month.
And they meet usually the same time as others do, so.
Yep.
We'll sit down and figure out a schedule and probably have to talk to the cities.
Or we may have to broaden out and commissioners may have to try to cover all of those. They don't have to all be there at the same time.
A very good point.
Hmm, I don't know. I think it's pretty important we're all unified on this myself.
Well, that's true, but I mean, if we're going to fight a timeline, you're, you're going to, you're not going to get it done in a month.
Mm-mm.
Well, it was just an objective, trying to stay on, get on schedule, so.
All right, thank you. We're going to move on to our next public hearing to consider an application for a temporary on-sale malt beverage license to operate outside of a municipality for the Lenox Booster Club. Who's going to handle this one?
Hi, good morning.
All right, hi.
Hi, I'm Heidi Bowers. Um, I'm the Lenox Booster Club, uh, president. Um, we did this event last year and it was a very successful fundraiser for us. We're looking at doing it, um, again this year. Um, and we're grateful to be able to use the 4H facility. It works out great, um, and we would like to do it again.
All right, great. Um, is there anyone here to speak, uh, for or against the application for the temporary If not, any commissioners have questions for the applicant?
I'm a commissioner, but I have one question.
Go ahead.
Did you set up an alternative date just in case of weather or anything?
Don't jinx us.
I know, I know, I'm sorry, but.
Sorry, last year the tornadoes hit and so we had, I didn't, no, I didn't. We'll just gamble, I guess.
Well, do you want to?
Yeah, um.
What day do you have it set for now?
The 24th. I just don't know what the dueling dual would be available for, so that'd be hard for me. Yeah, we'll just wait. Thank you, though, for thinking of that. I appreciate it.
All right. I consider a motion.
Also, Madam Chair, second.
Is that a motion to approve?
Second.
Commissioner Gibbon, is that a motion to approve?
Yes, yes.
Thank you. Is that your second, Commissioner Schmidt?
Correct.
Thank you. Uh, Sherri, will you call the roll?
Commissioner Aaron's.
Yes.
Commissioner Poppins.
Yes.
Commissioner Gibbon.
Yes.
Commissioner Schmidt.
Yes.
Commissioner Landin.
Yes. Motion carries.
Okay, thank you guys very much.
You bet. Thank you.
Fingers crossed.
I'll go ahead with our second reading and public hearing. For an ordinance of Lincoln County, South Dakota rezoning a portion, uh, proposed Lot 1, Block 1, MCC addition of the property legally described as tract 2, DeYoung Addition, Southwest Quarter, Section 32, Township 100 North, Range 50 West, Stella Pre Township from the C Commercial District to the I-1 Light Industrial District and amending the official zoning map of Lincoln County. The Planning Commission recommendation for approval of the rezone failed zero to four. Is anybody from Planning and Zoning? Hi.
Good morning.
I didn't even see you sitting back there.
I snuck in.
You snuck in.
Toby Brown with County Planning. Um, this, the applicant for this item is, uh, Sandy Wolfswinkle with KNN Construction. Uh, the property owner is Kelly Nielsen. Uh, subject property is located approximately 4,000 feet southwest of the Harrisburg corporate limits. Uh, subject parcel is 16.4 or 5 acres in size. However, the applicant is requesting a portion of that, which is the 4.80 acres which is identified, uh, that is currently zoned commercial on the parcel. Uh, subject property is currently vacant. Uh, subject property was previously a farmstead, which had a single-family dwelling and some agricultural structures. All of those have been removed, uh, from the property. Um, the applicant is requesting or submitted this application for the purpose of constructing a approximate 21,000-square-foot building, uh, which would be utilized for a prefab wall manufacturing facility. Um, in 2019, uh, the county approved an application from the property owner to rezone the subject four-point acres, uh, from A1 Agricultural to C Commercial. At that time, the applicant intended conceptually to construct personal storage, uh, mini-storage on the property. At that time, staff also worked with the applicant and some of the surrounding property owners, uh, on a drainage plan, uh, for the property. At that time, you're aware that we had just adopted the new drainage standards, and so this was one of the first properties that that was, um, what I would call implemented on. Um, and at that time, there was identification of some, uh, storage or, uh, storage of the, the drainage on the property as well as proposed ditch along the north side of the property. Um, some of the property owners are concerned that those improvements haven't been completed to date. Uh, there hasn't been any building permits associated with the property, so there's really no permitting, uh, to authorize those improvements to be done at this time. Um, also, since the 2019 approval of the rezoning, uh, the City of Harrisburg annexed the, the new school, which is off of 472nd Avenue. Um, and with that annexation, they expanded their subdivision authority. Uh, so the City of Harrisburg, uh, does identify this property as a growth area and also as, um, their subdivision authority, uh, trying to work with staff through that, how we're going to proceed with as far as what's previously been approved with the drainage plan. Uh, the applicant did also since the Planning Commission meeting meet with the City of Harrisburg. Uh, City of Harrisburg staff did send, uh, me an email and identified that, and again, this was after the Planning Commission meeting, uh, but that this proposed use of this property fits with Harrisburg's future land use plan for this area and will be a welcome addition to our community. We support your effort to obtain a change of zoning district with Lincoln County, and that's Michael McMahon, uh, City Planning, uh, and Zoning Administrator. Uh, as was mentioned, the Planning Commission did have an affirmative motion on this, which did not pass, so essentially a recommendation of denial. Uh, some of the reasoning for that is they identified that the future land use map, uh, nodal area for commercial, rural, commercial, industrial does not cover into this property, um, as well as there was some opposition from some of the, uh, adjoining property owners at that meeting. But again, I would say generally, the Planning Commission felt that this application was not consistent with, uh, with the comprehensive plan. Uh, staff analysis in the staff report, uh, which I attached to this meeting agenda, identified that there's been quite a bit of, uh, conversion of land in this area over the few, over the previous years. Uh, as you can see on the map, subject property to the south, um, as well as, uh, the property the property owner does own adjoining property to the east, which has also been rezoned to allow development of his property. And so again, planning commission does, affirmative motion, recommend denial of this application. With that, I'd have to answer your questions that you have for staff at this time.
Anybody have any questions for staff right now?
Was drainage the primary reason for the denial?
No, I don't believe so. I believe it was really the comprehensive land use part of it.
It was what?
Land use part of it, yeah.
Toby, you want to go back a couple of slides?
Yep.
Okay, right. So all of that property from the outlined area down, I mean, I'm going to say that kind of a line that goes through there must be some kind of drainage. That's all been rezoned, correct?
Yeah. So the channel that you see, that's Nine Mile.
The infamous Nine Mile.
Yep.
Toby, do you have the parcel number?
Yes.
What is it?
I'll pull it up once here. So I answer that question again is I believe the drainage is a concern of the neighbors, some of the neighbors there, but I don't know how much of that was part of the decision of the, of the planning commission. I think there was written more in just the, in the land use part of it. But again, I would say that in 2019, when staff worked with the neighbors and with the applicant, that there was an approved drainage plan that did meet and exceed the standards that we currently have in place right now.
That's in place, that's in place currently?
Correct.
Toby, what was that parcel number? Thank you.
Yep. So this is kind of a little bit of a, the planning commission did comment at their last planning commission meeting too, after that decision, that there's a lot of color in that area as far as different conversions of land use and things like that.
So currently it's listed as ag?
No, currently it's commercial.
Commercial.
And this is an application to change it to I-1 light industrial to allow.
Purpose is just to manufacture the side walls or whatever.
Yeah, prefab walls.
For building purposes, yeah. And it's all self-contained, correct?
To my understanding, yes.
The city of Harrisburg was in favor of this?
Yes. Yep. So the applicant, out of their own accord, met with the city staff and went through the proposal. And again, I read the correspondence that they sent to me.
So does this meet our comprehensive plan or not, or does this not even come into play here?
So from the, from the future land use map, this is identified as a future agricultural area. But again, from a policy or from, you know, goals and policy standpoint, is that if you look at kind of what's been developing in this area and what's changed in this area, and again, conversion from commercial to light industrial, if it was going from A1 to commercial or to I-1, you know, there's a different, a different question there. But since you're going from commercial to I-1, you've already essentially proposed development for this property. But the applicant's in attendance, if you want to hear from him or?
I do.
Okay. Thank you.
Yep, the applicant coming up?
Hi, Kelly Nielsen, 27297 Wetland Road. As Toby shared with you, we kind of went through all this in 2019 to take the land out of bag, get it zoned. At that time, I didn't approach I-1. I just was commercial because we had full intentions of building a storage facility there. By the time I got through all the drainage challenges with some of the neighbors and county and regulations, which we did get through, as you shared, and they are implemented, most of that dirt has been moved and adjusted to allow for the retention as was required. The full site isn't done on the north property line at this time, but drainage is accommodated for the farmer to the north. 2020, we got that approval with all that drainage. COVID hit, kind of held back on that investment as far as the storage unit facility. We were going to put as many units as we could, as you do in any storage unit, on that four acres. As a refresher, out of the other 16 acres, what total of 16 acres there, only four of it was available due to floodplain, with the exception of there's still one residential permit available for a housing build there on a small, like one acre lot. So the 16 acres, we're only able to use five of them. The rest of it will stay retention, detention for Nine Mile Creek forever. There was an agreement signed and recorded for that. So the parcel's kind of past the drainage discussions and all that. It's really about the rezone from commercial to I-1. We were a little bit ill-prepared going into the planning commission meeting due to the fact that what we were proposing, I thought, was a lot better project or a lot better land use than another storage unit. Just, and then obviously, we found the need and the use for this type of project and investment as far as employing up to potentially 20-plus people in the Lincoln County area, starting a business versus just another set of storage units. We were okay going back to that if we have to, so it's not like we're stuck using this land for, not a wasted land. I'll go back to storage units if I have to. I just feel like this is a lot better use. Is there any way to get this on the screen? No, it's good there. Thank you. So if you can see that. So that would be the proposed site of what we're going to do. There would be an asphalt parking lot in the, in the four acre parcel is what you can see between the gray and the building. The parking lot up in the far right corner would be the northeast corner. You can see that we'd have some lumber because it is a prefab wall shop. We'd have somebody's bring in lumber, drop them off. But inside the facility is where we'd have, you know, laborers working and putting together walls that we would ship back out to the residential sites to build homes, for the most part, some apartment complexes, et cetera. But that is what the site would be at. Like I said, there'd be some semis, so we have all that extra space there. That versus putting in potentially 300 storage units plus, I thought was a better site use. We have also in our plans, if you look at the very north property line where there's a proposed drainage ditch, it's roughed in as of today, but there'd be a finalized drainage ditch. That's also a proposed driveway that would get back to that residential lot. This building would be 50 feet off of the property line to the north versus, I think it's only 20 or 30-foot requirement. So we have the room to slide it over to appease any neighbors to the future north, so we have that done as well. This is what the site would look like in the event that the zoning gets changed as of today and then a permit is approved in the future. But yeah, it's kind of the site that we have. We did send all this out to all of the neighbors and ask them to meet us on site. We had one neighbor protest the project during the planning commission and the farmer that rents that same parcel protested it at the planning commission. We had no residential homeowners protest any of this that live in the area. We sent out our radius per the requirements of this meeting. We resent out another letter as of last week, just making sure they knew it was coming and asked them to meet us on site. Nobody, including the neighbor to the north, showed up at that request so that we could explain what we were doing. So that's kind of where I'm at with it.
Anybody have any questions for Kelly?
You said 21,000, correct?
The total building will be with, it's the building itself is like 19,9, the big shell, and then we'll have another give or take thousand to 1,500 of office space. So yeah, roughly 21,000 total.
Kelly, are you going to have additional employment opportunities here?
It's all, it's all on growth. The equipment we bought for inside the building could potentially do twice as many homes a year as what I can do.
Yeah.
So yes, it could grow depending on the market, the demand, yada, yada, yada.
Okay.
But the facility itself wouldn't get bigger to accommodate that. There's room in the facility itself.
So to recap this thing, Harrisburg is okay with it. You're meeting the drainage thing. You've set aside acres for potential, 10 acres of the 15 are set aside for future drainage on Nine Mile Creek.
Yep.
Okay.
Yeah, I can't touch that land. That was all addressed in 2019. I can't ever develop it or try to.
So the choice is, as you said, you can put a bunch more storage units up there, which will increase the traffic count, which will increase security that our sheriff has to maintain. So, because we got people that like to break into those things. Or you put a building up and you build your walls, side walls and stuff for.
The way I understand it, as of right now, yes, I could go put storage units up without any, I wouldn't have to talk to you about that as long as I met the requirements of density unless it was a conditional use in the building. Or I could do this facility, and that's where I was ill-prepared. I thought this was a lot nicer site, but everything's up for objection.
Thank you. Commissioner Poppins, do you have a question?
Just want to remind, this is the first reading. It's not public comment. We're having a lot of discussion.
It's a second reading in public.
It listed as, I thought it was listed as first.
Nope.
Second reading.
My apologies, manager.
So it looks like there's light industrial right across the road from that site. Is that right?
Yes, if you look at.
What do they do?
I have light industrial straight east and light industrial straight west. I'm connected on two sides with light industrial.
And then to the south of you, those are, are those storage?
They're my commercial. They're contractor shops. They're probably very similar type product to what we're doing, but they're not meeting I-1 requirements, I guess.
Sure. Anybody else have any questions for the applicant? If not, is there anyone here to speak in favor of the application? Anyone to speak against it? Go ahead and come on up. State your name and address.
Good morning. Deb Thompson, 47856 270th Street. My parents own the farmland directly to the north of this. And first of all, I'd like to say Mr. Nielsen did send out a letter regarding today's meeting. However, it was dated last Wednesday. Nowhere in the letter is there an invitation to meet him on site to discuss anything. And if you want to read the letter, it's right here. It also says that this property is near the intersection of 273rd and 471st Street. I don't know what you consider near, but it's about, it's at least a fourth of a mile north of that corner. And it also states it's near the Harrisburg I-29 interchange. It's about three-fourths of a mile away from that. Mr. Poppins was talking about deja vu with jail discussion. This is deja vu with discussing this four acres of property. After reading the staff analysis provided by the Planning and Zoning Commission, there's a couple of comments I'd like to make. There is no comment in here about the residential homes directly to the west or to the north, which is all west and north of this is all residential. It is probably more residential in this area than commercial. And it states that the future land use plan encourages industrial development to locate within cities, and this is definitely not within a city. It's in a residential rural area. And it states that commercial and industrial areas should be at major highway intersections. 471st Street is a township road. It's not even a county road. I do have some pictures I'd like to share. I'll see if, Toby, I need your help. Oh, there it is. Okay. I gotta figure out how to do this again. This was the proposed lot on July 9th that I took right prior to the Planning and Zoning Commission meeting. This picture I took Sunday. The weeds have been dealt with. There's been about three feet of landfill put in. No drainage ditch. This is the farmland. Directly to the north, there is no drainage ditch. Nothing has been put in. If we get an inch or two of rain with landfill that he's already put in, the bean field's going to flood. The entrance to the field, this is looking northeast. These homes, this is Baker's Crossing. So this is far from being an industrial, commercial area. It is residential. And if this 79 acres is ever sold, the chances that it will be sold for residential development are very high. These houses at Baker's, this is the farmland. These houses at Baker's Crossing range from 750,000 to 1.5 million dollars, and they're joining this farmland that is adjoining the proposed industrial area. This is 471st Street, residential, 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 residential. This is the farmland. This is the area he wants to get zoned to industrial. To put up a 21,000 square foot shop with semis going in and out on a continual basis. And these are not inexpensive homes. This acreage is directly across the road from the farmland. $500,000. This is just north of the $500,000 house. This is looking, this is the field entrance. You can see it's, it's all residential. I mean, so, and not only that, but the township, this isn't a very good picture. It's the best I could get. It's the bridge that the semis will have to cross on the township road that was built in 1934. I don't think it's made to have semis cross it, several semis on a daily basis. So I just want to ask you, as a commissioner, this is your $500,000 house. Would you want a 21,000 square foot manufacturing plant built across the road from your acreage where semis will be going in and out every single day? It's going to devalue your land. I ask you to agree with the Planning and Zoning Commission. There is a reason that they suggested that this permit be denied. They not only suggested it, they unanimously approved or denied it unanimously, and drainage was a big discussion at that meeting. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Anybody else like to come up and speak on the item? If not, discussion?
No, you have one.
Oh, go ahead. Come on up.
Don Hoffman, 47331, 273rd Street, 2019. Everything was supposed to have been taken care of here.
Yeah.
We went from agricultural to commercial property. Good. I farmed the Young Place just to the north. I sat in this very room, probably sat in about the same seat. What about the drainage? Because everything from that north farm's got to come across that piece of property in order to get to Nine Mile Creek. No problem. We'll put a ditch along the north side of the property. We're going to take that ditch to the east. About where 473, not quite to that pond, there's a draw that heads south to Nine Mile Creek. The water will run there. Sounds good. That was in 2019. 2022, at least three times, I met with Toby. Toby, what are we going to do about this ditch? There's no ditch there. Didn't get done. Don, don't worry about it. We're working on it. As a farmer, I don't have a hell of a lot of patience. I'm sorry. Three years to put a ditch in. At the Planning and Zoning meeting, I heard the comment was, well, we don't have the final grade on our property, so we can't put the ditch in. That farmland is not changing depth. That ditch was to be put in there to drain the farm. I sat here and listened to his engineers tell me, we're going to fill that area up about three foot, but we're going to take that dirt out right by Nine Mile Creek, create a retention pond there. Okay, I got my ideas on retention ponds. You know, it doesn't do you any good to dig a retention pond 20 feet deep because once it fills with water, that bottom doesn't do you any good. It can't be any deeper than what the creek is. Go by there. Somebody go by there and tell me that they see a retention pond. There's three feet of dirt that's been filled in. That dirt was to come from that pond, to dig that pond, because they're taking land out of where the water's going to back up. I just heard today. We can't develop any of the other land because it's retention. It's always been a retention. You're not, you're not trading anything. If you fill in a wetland area, you're supposed to create one someplace else. It has not been done. Three years. Now, all of a sudden, we want to do a commercial. Really? I seen a nice picture up there. Kelly and I, we even talked about that one time, sharing the driveway, because he was talking about building the house back in there. Everybody remember Sam Rogers? The house on the hill there that was tore down because he had to build it up so high because it's all wetlands. And now we're going to allow another house, building permit to go back in there? People, I'm 71 years old. I'm getting darn tired. I'm getting darn tired of having all these rules and regulations. Somebody comes up and does the song and dance and makes everything sound just hunky-dory, and nobody checks on them. Why would we give him a permit to do industrial development when he did not do what he was supposed to three years ago on commercial property? Why aren't we checking on, making sure things are getting done the way they were supposed to? And now we're back in here. Planning and zoning board voted 4-0 not to do it. There's probably a good reason why. Because I said the same thing to them is why I'm telling you guys. But yeah, let's not worry about it. Nine Mile Creek will take care of itself. The poor people downstream will get flooded out again. Time only takes a little bit of time.
Toby, can you come back up, please? So, understanding that this is a rezone, for Mr. Nielsen to put in what he's proposing, what's the next step? I mean, how does the flooding and water drainage get handled by the county?
Sorry, Toby.
Go ahead. Go ahead.
It's not, it's gonna be Harrisburg.
And Harrisburg's approving this?
They're not approving it, they're just, they support it.
Well, that's how I'm reading their letter.
If I may, Toby?
Go ahead.
We're running into this circumstance with the city of Sioux Falls. We've seen it more and more with the city of Harrisburg. We rezoned, but then it falls under the jurisdiction of the municipality of Harrisburg or Sioux Falls. I'm not familiar with Harrisburg, but I'm going to guess they don't have the infrastructure in place to actually enforce. I know the city of Sioux Falls lacks the infrastructure to take care of what we grant them for jurisdiction. And we're addressing it, hopefully, with them. It's a slow process. They're not equipped for it. So that is a severe issue as these areas become under the jurisdiction of adjoining municipalities. So I urge caution, if for no other reason than that, because there is no infrastructure for the municipality to enforce any jurisdiction when it comes to what does or does not happen as far as drainage.
Well, it's already a commercial district, so what's the difference? As far as drainage is concerned?
Well...
There isn't any.
The, I think this differential will be is he would, unless I'm incorrect, have to follow what the jurisdiction was. I would hope, unless he applies. I don't know how this goes because this was rezoned and had a set of plans based on what the county requirements were. Which Toby, can you, I was gonna ask you, and you might as well do it now. Is that ditch that is in discussion there, or is it not there?
It's not there. No. But, but again, this gets to the point that when, when we issue a building permit and there's actually construction there, it'll be completed. There was never a promise that it was gonna be done immediately once the rezon was in place because we don't have a grading permit now. The neighbors are gonna disagree with that and will, you know, issue that. But, but we did meet with them and we discussed that part of it. I would address Commissioner Poppins' points is that we still have flood plan on that property. So I still think, I'm in discussions with Harrisburg on how to proceed with that, but I still think that they'll accept what we've already been approved for with, with the drainage, with the drainage plan. But no guarantees on that, but, but I think because we have flood plan on the property, I think that's how we'll enforce that part of it, so.
Toby, help me understand something. It's already zoned commercial. Okay. So all Mr. Nielsen has to do is say, "Okay, you don't wanna have a building here, all right? I'm just gonna put storage units there." And he can do that, correct?
Correct.
No big deal, he can do that. So, and now we got storage units. And now we got traffic. I know, I know we talked about semis, but storage units, if you have somebody, they come back and forth about every damn day. And storage units also require our supervision by our sheriff's department. And we got, we got a ton of those darn things out there. So I'm, I'm hard pressed to figure out, what is the difference? If you put a building up and you're housed inside and you're building something, and you take that out, or having, I don't know how many, how many storage units you can put there? How many?
Right, what's it, 300?
300 storage units. 300 storage units? And, and if you're, if you're living there, you made a good point about residential, I understand that. But yet, the residential can complain every, every which way, but he has the ability to put 300 storage units there. Now, 300 storage units versus one building? I don't know. If I'm living there, I think I'd rather see a building rather than 300 storage units. That's my own personal feeling.
Toby, when we looked at the rezon on 47083 along the interstate, there was a lot of discussion about the Township Road at, at that point. Granted, we cannot add stipulations at a rezon, but can you enlighten the board on what was discussed with the Township? Was that ever disclosed to us, what their agreement was for maintaining that road?
Well, so the valley township's to the south. And they have a road, I guess a road agreement there, but this would be Delapre to the north. And other than, I believe the applicant, I'll let him comment on that, but I believe they have visited with, with representatives from Delapre Township, as well as at the Planning Commission, Ron Albers, who's on the Delapre Township Board, was in attendance at that meeting. So I'm, I'm not aware, there is no agreement that I am aware of between the applicant and Delapre Township. But there isn't, typically, Delapre hasn't engaged in any agreements with their landowners.
Kelly, can you come back up for a second? That was the question that I had had, was regarding the township and that bridge. Have you guys talked about what that capacity for that is?
I met Ron out there in, give or take, 2020. Got approval to put in the culvert and location because it had been their ditch and that and that. Talked about their bridge and the weight. Didn't have any issues with that at that time when it was the commercial zoning. I did not talk to him prior to the planning meeting, but he was right here in the planning meeting and didn't see that there was any issues with the Township. Since the Planning Commission, I did reach out and leave him a voicemail, but I didn't get a call back as of Friday, I think it was.
Was, was the capacity of the road discussed with semis versus at the meeting?
The bridge in 2020, when I visited with them?
No, at your planning and zoning meeting?
There was no concerns other than public bringing that up. Del Bridge, no, or Commission brought that up.
But nobody from the township itself brought it up to you?
Correct.
As being an issue?
And we've talked about it at that time, that if it had to be addressed, it'd be addressed. And then property owners, I assume, would have to take part in that.
Thank you.
Regarding the building being off of the road, we're 190 feet back off of this gravel road with the proposed building. Storage units could be within 50 feet of the road.
And I, you don't have to answer this if you don't want. I know there's different sizes of storage units. I mean, was your plan to have for the big, you know, campers and all of that, the indoor storage? Or were they gonna be smaller?
This location, they'd probably be the smaller, more dense ones. There might be a little variety, but we try to get as many as possible due to the location. It's not ideal probably for storage, but it'd be the best thing I got.
Kelly, if I may, have you submitted a new site plan to the city of Harrisburg then?
No. Well, they've seen what I showed you. I mean, they know what we're proposing and they're supportive of it.
I guess what seems to be a common question is the ditch.
I would encourage anybody in this room, I'll meet you on site at any time, including the farmer, including the neighbor. There is a rough ditch there. The farm ground is not getting flooded. I respect the farmers, I understand it. My property was already lower where they're talking about. And then if you take their picture and actually walk on the site and go, give or take 400 yards east of the gravel road and walk out there, or drive, it's smooth now because I did knock down the weeds since the Planning Commission meeting, you could literally drive your pickup and see a rough cut ditch that would drain any of their property to Nine Mile Creek. I'm not, you made two inch rain tonight and you're not gonna flood his property.
I mean, I'm looking at Parcel Browser and I see a rough ditch there. I mean, it's not probably as defined as some would like it, but...
It should be on the north side of the property. Is it supposed to, Kelly, is this, sorry. Is it supposed to be on the north side heading east or heading west then?
It would be on the north side of my property.
Yep.
South side of theirs. Where I, where I have the zone three and you're drawing right there, that's the portion that would have drained through, back in the day, that would have drained through the property and went straight south. And now, when you come there, you go to this, their whole field drains to the same point. And it, I had to cut a ditch, if there's a great big tree out there, I had to cut a ditch on the south side of the tree to allow that to drain through in the event that they would have a flood.
But does the water drain east or west then?
It drains from there. It goes, a small portion will eventually go back to the ditch, but not very much because the township didn't want anymore there. So 90% of the north property line will drain back to the east. And then you see that low drainage point running north and south that's already there. Just on the, it'd be just the east side of the red is where the natural drainage has always been. I just had to cut like a 200 yard strip there. Come to site. I'm happy to meet you, as I said, at the Planning Commission, and I'll meet anybody out there. It's, I don't have to talk, I show you.
All right. I'm gonna close testimony on this. You may if it's brief.
I will just add that another reason this was denied at the Planning and Zoning is because you're going back to spot zoning. It would be an island of industrial. And as far as the comment that... Now I lost my train of thought. Everything would be enclosed. And storage units, I own a storage unit. I am not at my storage unit every single day. If I go once a month, that's it. And Mr. Nielsen did already build storage units along 273rd Street. About right in here, there's storage units, a lot of them. And again, residential. If you've looked at what he has stacked along 273rd, it's not very pretty to be across the house from, across the road from three to five to million dollar houses.
Thank you. I'm gonna close testimony on this and ask for a motion to approve the ordinance rezon.
I will make a motion, Madam Chair, to approve.
Thank you. Is there a second?
I'll second for a discussion.
Thank you. Any further discussion?
Madam Chair?
Go ahead.
On the surface, this does not look like a significant change, but there is a fine line between what was happened back in, I believe, as Mr. Hoffman said, 2019. In making this jump, I do think there, I will support what the Planning and Zoning Department gave as a recommendation, which was to deny this. It looks like a great opportunity. There are conditions, though, that I think needed to be addressed in the Township Road being a significant one. Handling daily traffic is probably gonna be my main reason for not supporting it today. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else? No?
No.
All right. I'll go ahead and call the question then.
Commissioner Aaron's?
No.
Commissioner Poppins?
No.
Commissioner Gibbon?
No.
Commissioner Schmidt?
Yes.
Commissioner Landy?
Yes. So the request for the ordinance change is denied. Move on to the next agenda item.
Southeastern Behavioral Health actually rescheduled until September 27th.
Okay. All right.
That's good.
Then we have a first reading?
First reading for an ordinance of Lincoln County, South Dakota, regarding the issuance of local medical cannabis established permits by admitting ordinance 2106-30.
All right. Do you wanna, do you wanna read the ordinance?
It's long, I believe.
Is it, I'm, it's probably really long, but... It's a, it's a reading, so I guess we're gonna read it.
Do we not just normally read the title?
Yeah. That's what we normally do. Well, it's just our first reading, so we're not having a discussion on it.
Yep.
That's fine. All right. And when's that second hearing gonna be set, Sherry?
The...
No.
Let me see. Now I can't find it, sorry.
Was it on our consent?
Probably a couple of meetings ago.
Okay.
Second reading and public hearing is on September 13th.
All right. Thank you. Oh, move on to item six on our agenda?
There's, nothing can be said about that.
It's not a public input session. It's just the first reading. So all the testimony will be heard at the next reading.
And then you make changes on the fly and then vote on it on the same day?
That's possible. If you wanna change it, then, you know, you can change it. And talk to whoever you were working with, if you were working for, with Bill Golden on the ordinance language.
No, I didn't. This just came to my attention like last night, so...
Okay. Yeah, we're not gonna take any action or get any public input today because it's, that's not the way it's scheduled. Move on to the next item. Space needs, State's Attorney's Office.
They need my room.
Bill, you gonna handle that?
Yes. Mr. Wallman was gonna be here, but he's scheduled with Judge Pecus up in Minnehaw County right now.
So you had to drive all the way up there for court?
He's there all morning, I believe.
Okay.
With being notified at the courthouse committee that we're no longer gonna be able to use 2A for grand jury, that means we have to bring the grand jury back into our office for space. Currently, that is my office. And so therefore, I am now out of an office. We already have staff that are doubled up in offices to begin with, so we could really use two offices today to just handle the individuals we have. We are asking for additional in our new budget, and we will not have any space for any individuals at this point in time. So as of next Tuesday, we're one, we're one office short.
Is there anywhere else in the courthouse that you could have an office? So is, any availability that you know of?
I can go down to the HR Director's office at the moment and sit there until we hire an HR Director. And then I will no longer have an office at that time. But we could delay it by maybe a month or two.
Okay.
You could use, how many offices, Bill?
Well, currently, we have two paralegals in the same office. It was designed for one individual, but we've just doubled up. And then, of course, I am, like I said, I was without because I was using the grand jury room because it was easier for me to leave the area when there was meetings or they're using, needed to use it for victims or witnesses. I would just relocate.
Does your office, don't laugh, Sherry. Do you use that, do you use your, your little room all the time? No. Is it possible, Bill? Because you're, it appears that we're just trying to find a slot for you to go rather than having a card table out in the lobby here.
And, I mean, we're, we're hoping that you're going to give us at least one or two new employees for the next coming year, so... This was more of anything else, just to start the conversation, that we're truly without space at this point. We really are.
If you use that room that we have downstairs, three in one or whatever that...
The multi-purpose room?
Multi-purpose room. If you were to take the tables out of there and put some petitions up there, you could accommodate some extra people, correct?
I have a really strong suspicion that at some point it may become a courtroom.
Oh, okay.
Madam Chair?
So, I know where this is going for me. And I'm looking at our highway superintendent. And I know we talked about highway moving out to the shop, and we know what that looks like out there. So I think this is a bigger conversation. But I'm, I'm aware of the need. We are aware of the need. Does anybody have any questions for Mr. Golden right now?
I have a proposal.
Yeah, go ahead.
Madam Chair, I would like us to appoint, with his willingness, Commissioner Aaron's and one other commissioner to have authorization to negotiate with purchasing or finding a... acceptable lease for the bank building because we're out of space. If the proposal is selected of adding courtrooms to this, we're going to need a short-term answer. This is a, for the purposes of short-term needs, I think we need to be serious and taking action of finding immediate need space, at least until we get a facility built.
Commissioner Poppins, how would that work? I wouldn't, are you saying that Bill would have to have his office off-site?
I'm suggesting that possibly there's other offices such as WIC or something like that that might be more useful in that space. Because we have, as much as a difficulty this is, if we tear down the existing, to build a new facility, it's going to cause substantial headache that we have no idea yet, and if we have a property that may or may not be for sale adjacent to our current facility, I think is, is imperative that we pursue that opportunity.
And correct me if I'm wrong, but that building is not, billing is not ADA compliant, correct?
It is not.
It is not, no.
So we'd have to put hundreds, if not, I, I don't know how much, hundreds of thousands into that building to get it to be ADA compliant?
It depends on what it chooses and what you put in there. If it's something that can be accommodated on the ground floor, it may just be a matter of putting on a ramp or something outside, making it compliant so that somebody in a wheelchair could get into the doors. If you're going to make the entire building ADA compliant, then that would be, that would be an expensive proposition because I don't believe the elevator...
No.
At this point is ADA compliant, and so therefore, it'd have to be revamped. But if you, if you allowed access to the main floor and everybody could get all the services on the main floor, I think that might go by temporarily, but.
And again, this is a temporary, I would not support making substantial investment into restructuring the building, it's a matter of getting us through the next three to four years, so, Madam Chair.
Thank you. Is there, so I know Commissioner Aaron's, your name was mentioned, do you want to work with Mr. Golden on that?
Happy to do so.
All right, sounds good.
Is there another commissioner that'd be willing to serve as well?
Well, it's your idea, so maybe that should be you.
I'm glad to serve as well.
Okay, great. All right, we'll move on to item seven on our agenda.
I don't know if Sherri got the answer there, but it sounds like you might be moving.
It all costs money. It all costs money, unfortunately.
Good morning, Commission, Carla Goson, Director of Equalization.
Can we rephrase that, just say, morning?
Good morning.
I'll say good morning.
I would like to recommend approval for an abatement on parcel number one hundred dot five zero dot one eight dot J one hundred in the amount of six hundred and eighty-six dollars and seventy-nine cents. The property is legally described as the Murray Track A, South Half, Southeast Quarter in Section eighteen, Township one hundred, Range fifty, in the ownership name of Bentwood Place Incorporated. Buildings have been removed after the legal assessment date. We do, we did go out and verify that the buildings were removed. I did not attach a picture in the Commissioner's chair drive, I apologize for that, but we do have a picture of there are no longer any buildings other than a barn on the site. So I would like to recommend the approval for the abatement for the twenty-one taxes payable twenty-two.
Thank you, can I get a motion to approve, please?
So moved, Madam Chair.
Is there a second?
I'll second it.
Thank you, Sherri, you call the roll.
Commissioner Aaron's?
Yes.
Commissioner Poppins?
Yes.
Commissioner Gibbon?
Yes.
Commissioner Schmidt?
Yes.
Commissioner Landy?
Yes.
Thank you.
All right, move on to item eight on our agenda.
So we have got two parcels that are within the city of Sioux Falls. One is a drainage ditch and one is a, the flow to the drainage ditch. I've talked to the city of Sioux Falls and they're willing to take them over. They both have been tax-deeded, so we just need to surplus them and then authorize the Chair to execute the quit claim.
I would so move.
Second.
Thank you, you call the roll, Sherri?
Commissioner Aaron's?
Yes.
Commissioner Poppins?
Yes.
Commissioner Gibbon?
Yes.
Commissioner Schmidt?
Yes.
Commissioner Landy?
Yes.
Item nine on our agenda, we need to appoint two commissioners to serve on a committee. Sherri, do you have that?
I do. So, not sure how familiar everybody is with the RAF funds. The RAF funds are from the state, and what they do is they've given us money to cost share with the townships for structures and bridge replacements, and we need to, they'll be doing a grant process, and we need to have a committee together to review and recommend the grants for the rural infrastructure money.
Are you looking for volunteers yet, Madam Chair?
I am looking for volunteers.
I guess I'll volunteer.
So will I.
All right, I guess we have our two volunteers. Do we need a motion or anything on that, Sherri?
Yes.
Okay.
So move to appoint Gibbon and Commissioner Schmidt.
All right, is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Sherri, you call the roll.
Commissioner Aaron's?
Yes.
Commissioner Poppins?
Yes.
Commissioner Gibbon?
Yes.
Commissioner Schmidt?
Yes.
Commissioner Landy?
Yes.
Commissioner Gibbons and Schmidt, then I'll need you after the meeting to go over some of the information we put together regarding it, please.
Good morning, Sherri.
Good morning.
You're still staying good even though the news you just got, I like that.
Every day's a good day, on top of the greens, so. First item I have is approve and award a bid for replacing the structure four-two dash one-four-eight dash zero-five-zero, which is referred to as the Lake Alvin Bridge. We had a bid opening last Wednesday on this, and we have four, four bids, and I'll read them off, beginning with the low bid. Low bid is BX Civil and Construction at one million, one hundred and twenty thousand, one hundred and twenty-six dollars. The next bid is Knoll's Dragline and Construction, one million, two hundred and fifty-two thousand, eight hundred and fifty dollars and fifty-four cents. The next bid was Pram Construction with a bid of one million, two hundred and ninety-three thousand, eight hundred and forty-six dollars and ten cents. And the last bid was Journey Group Companies with a bid of one million, four hundred and thirty-two thousand, two hundred and ninety-one dollars and seventy cents. Cost estimate, engineer's cost estimate on this was one million, fifty-six thousand, three hundred and ninety-two dollars and ninety cents. So it is slightly above the cost of engineer's cost estimate, but we, we think that this is pretty good, so we're asking that we award the bid to BX Civil, the low bid.
I would so move, Madam Chair.
I have a motion to accept BX Civil and Construction Inc.'s bid, is there a second?
I'll second it.
Any discussion? Sherri, you call the roll.
Commissioner Aaron's?
Yes.
Commissioner Poppins?
Yes.
Commissioner Gibbon?
Yes.
Commissioner Schmidt?
Yes.
Commissioner Landy?
Yes.
So the next item I have is, so this one here is going to be a little, they'll need some explanation, but I'm looking for approval to reject all bids for a preservation grant on structure four-two dash zero-two-zero dash two-oh-one. This structure is located on Old Highway seventeen, it's about three, just over three miles south of Highway eighteen. We're going to, we are awarded a preservation grant for this structure. So we applied for a preservation grant in December of twenty, and we were awarded February, March of twenty-one. At that time, when we went into it, cost estimate was about six hundred and sixty thousand. By the time, when we were awarded the grant last year, early last year, we had to do all the engineering work on this, and come up to about a year later, a few months ago, once we're going, ready to go to bid on this, cost estimate went up to about seven fifty is what we thought. So on this structure, I had two bidders, and I'll read them off, we're starting with the low bid, which is Journey Group Companies, which is one million, eighty-nine thousand, nine hundred and fifty dollars and fifteen cents. And the other bid was with PCI Roads, one million, one hundred and two thousand, eight hundred dollars and fifty-three cents. And again, engineer's cost estimate for this was seven hundred and forty thousand, so what we're going to do is, again, we were awarded a grant to do this money, which would be eighty percent. Well, that grant is based off of the six-sixty when we applied for this grant back in twenty. So the grant amount was about five hundred and twenty thousand dollars, what the cap is. So I do have this budgeted for next year, but I don't have near the money because the rest, whatever is not covered by the grant, if we accept this bid, we would be responsible for, and I only have just over a hundred and fifty thousand budgeted for this for twenty-three. So what we're going to do is we're going to reject these bids, and then we'll go back to the state, we'll reapply January second in twenty-three here for this, and basically we're looking for the difference between what the grant cap is now to what the actual costs are, so. So what I'm looking for is rejecting of all bids, and then, like I said, at some point we'll be reapplying for a grant, so.
Madam Chair.
Thank you, Sherri, go ahead, Commissioner.
Quick question, Sherri, any guarantee we'll get the grant again?
So, so there is a process, I'll tell you this, so, so we opened this bid about three weeks ago. There is a process where the DOT has, has been aware that there's an issue with a lot of these grant applications being done a year and a half before they go to bid while with, in the last couple of years with the high rise in price costs. So they do have a process set up in which we can submit to them an, an application, so to speak, to bring it up to, you know, to get us more money to current day's cost. Well, we figured out the costs on that, and we're, I mean, we're hoping to get up to around the seven hundred thousand dollar range, and again, that meeting is Thursday. Again, this goes before the Transportation Committee, so, so even if we don't get that, I, I would hope that they would give us the extra come in January, because they've already awarded, or like I said, it's around five hundred and twenty thousand is what our original award is, so.
They look for two hundred thousand.
Yeah, so, so, yeah, we're going to be looking, you know, we're going to submit, our, our application's going to be on this cost, so about one point one for a total project cost, and then we'll have eighty percent of, or we'll have twenty percent of that. It's going to be slightly over what I have budgeted for next year, but I, I think it's going to be like sixty thousand, hopefully, and I could probably squeeze that maybe in somewhere and not do something next year.
We're almost done.
But.
So, just from understanding, though, you're hoping to get ninety thousand more, eighty percent of the ninety thousand more is all?
No, it's, it's going to be quite a large chunk.
Good, correct me, I thought you had said you were hoping to get to the seven fifty.
Well, that, that's just with the adjustment that we're, we're, we're applying for with the DOT on the big grant now. But again, we already started that paperwork in motion, and, and we have thirty days to either award or reject bids. Well, that thirty days is next week. So, so we, we don't have time to wait around to see if we're going to get that money or not. Even if we did get the money, it wouldn't do us any good, because I don't have that kind, I mean, I would, I would have to come up with four hundred thousand dollars of our own money, and that's not even close.
Right.
Madam Chair, I would approve rejecting all those bids pertaining to this particular structure.
So I have a motion to reject all the bids for structure forty-two dash twenty dash two-zero-one, is there a second?
Second for a discussion.
Second.
I've got a second by Poppins.
Did you get a chance to go through line by line and see where, was it just across the board their estimates are considerably higher, is there a specific area?
I think across the board, everything was higher on, on the costs, because both, both bidders were, you know, they were fairly close.
Yeah, they were pretty tight on their bid, I mean.
Yeah, because one was a million eighty-nine thousand, the other one was a million one hundred and two thousand.
I was compared, compared to what they are, you know, the estimate was, I was wondering if there's a specific line item that was way out of whack compared to what the estimate was.
You know, yeah, I'm not really sure, I, I guess we looked at it, but everything on, all the line items were higher than what we anticipated, which is, you know, and, and we thought we were, we're in trouble, because again, we opened this bid three weeks ago, and we just opened the Lake Alvin one last week, and we were kind of concerned that, you know, that was going to be significantly underfunded as well, but, which that was only slightly over what the engineer's estimate is. So, and again, I will tell you that, that when the engineers did their cost estimate, you know, even the last one before we went to bid, I mean, that was with current market prices at the beginning of this year, you know, and, and as far as the grant total, I mean, again, the grant number we had that we applied, when we applied for this grant, the six-sixty total cost was December of twenty, you know, so, so that's how significantly prices went up, even from twenty to twenty-one, or twenty earlier this year, once we got the design done correctly, got all the design done on this engineering, so.
Any IDM, was it, we only had two bidders, is it not a desirable project for other bidders, or do we need to do something to make it more enticing if we can pair it with something else or anything like that?
So, I, I will say that, that we left every option open on this. One of the options, and the reason that we bid it so early this year was hoping to get more contractors to bid on it and do it as winter work, because they're, they're always looking for jobs for winter time, and this would be a great one to do that. And again, I, I think possibly one of these contractors may be looking at doing that, but they wouldn't be moving in until, you know, end of, end of November, December. Well, even at that, I, I just don't have the money. You know, I mean, again, my budget's so tight, our proposed budget for twenty-three is so tight that I, I wouldn't be able to absorb another two hundred and fifty thousand additional for this project.
I just get concerned about if we not have the opportunity to take advantage of the, of the grant money because it sounds like a project that needs to get done anyway, so.
Well, again, I guess that would be a risk, but I, I guess I don't know that, if it's ever happened of anybody not getting additional funding on a grant.
Thank you, Sherri.
Thanks, Sherri.
Commissioner Aaron's? Commissioner Poppins?
Yes.
Commissioner Gibbon?
Yes.
Commissioner Schmidt?
Yes.
Commissioner Landy?
Yes.
Bill, do we need any executive session?
I'm not going to give any opportunity, I'll offer motion to adjourn.
Just settle down.
Shoot, I retract my motion.
We do need one?
Madam Chair, vote to go into executive session.
Under all items, since we're still pondering what it is going in under.
South Dakota Code of Fine Law, whatever.
All right, just, just a minute, I'm not accepting either of those motions right now. Don't make me use my gavel.
Going upstairs. Commissioner Gibbon, did the, they disclose what the anticipated bushel per acre was going to be in our local area?
Yes, they did. You know, the national average for corn is one seventy-one, South Dakota was one eighteen. The pod counts, you know, usually are eleven hundred to twelve hundred, we're like eight hundred and thirty-nine.
Is that out of the immediate area, or was that the whole state?
That was the whole state. The, the areas of Turner County, Hutchinson County, Yankton County, they're just a train wreck.
Yeah, I've had the opportunity to drive to Lincoln, Nebraska a couple times for my son who's, yeah, Husker, I'm sorry to say South Dakota, we'll try to get him back after he graduates, but anyway, you get, you know, south of Beersford on to Omaha... But anyway, you get, you know, south of Beersford on to Omaha, it's burnt up.
And, and, you know, we started in northern Minnehaha by, by T, north there, you know, and that was actually the best starting out. And then we got into, you know, south, and it dropped off. You know, we, we, we had one field around the Lennox area that was in the high 140s, but it just, and we went south again, it just kept dropping. It's, it's not good. The drought is really...
That may be why the market's up 30 cents again today. Hi, Bill.
Mr. Golden?
Contract Airport.
Ah, yes.
Okay.
I would have...
I'm going to, there are a couple other things I want to ask about in executive session related to employee matters and also with pending litigation. So, I would ask for an executive session under SDCL 125-2 sub 1, sub 3, and sub 4.
So moved.
Second.
Thank you. Sherri, you call the roll?
Commissioner Erns?
Yes.
Commissioner Poppins?
Yes.
Commissioner Gibbon?
Yes.
Commissioner Schmidt?
Yes.
Commissioner Landy?
Yes.
Commissioner Erns, do you want us to call your cell phone, or are you going to bow out?
I'm going to drop off, and then I'll check in with Bill after the meeting.
Okay.
Commissioner Erns, will you contact me this afternoon? Maybe we can find some time to work together.
I will.
Excellent.
Sounds good.
Thanks.
Yes.
Commissioner Gibbon?
Yes.
Commissioner Schmidt?
Yes.
Commissioner Landy?
Yes.
Move to adjourn.
I'll second.
Sherri, call the roll.
I'm trying to write.
All in favor, say aye.
Hey, Commissioner Poppins.
Hi. Oh, you want me to vote?
Yes.
Commissioner Gibbon?
Yes.
Commissioner Schmidt?
Yes.
Commissioner Landy?
Yes.
We're adjourned.
You two are, you two are standing.